We gotta be done.
Sorry, I'd like to call the village council meeting at 5:30 budget work session to order. April 13th, show 5:33. I see we have a full form. Before we start, I need to allow, I need a motion to allow council members to participate remotely.
So move.
All's in favor. Motion passes.
Take one pass around.
Alright, next up we have the adoption of the agenda. It's basically discussion of general budget, should be no changes. Need a motion to approve that.
I live.
All's in favor. Motion passes. Next up, who's got this?
You're going that way.
We're muted.
Oh my gosh.
Hey, I want to participate too guys.
Sorry about that.
Alright, you done Bob? We motion for you to participate remotely, so welcome.
This is going this way or that way?
I have them.
I did one each way. Cause I knew it was not good.
Alright, so we adopted the agenda too Bob.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. We'll call that a zoom dude. Way back.
Way back.
Alright, so who's taking this?
Christina, go.
No pressure.
So going around the room, actually gone around already, is this right here? Right, we're cheap. This is our recommended budget, we do have a little bit to play with, so I wanted to kind of give y'all the opportunity to let me know where you want to put it. So this is not a balanced budget, we've got an excess of $16,000 here. This is with a-
One, two, three, four.
This is a proposed tax rate decrease of .5 cent. So this is with a 5.5 tax rate, so we would actually go down a little bit. The numbers where we derive the taxes are those two numbers that you just, that came around the table. The first sheet is the revenue neutral. Looks like this.
Hey Austin, just a quick question, or a quick statement. I'm getting that buffering that's coming through, I'm almost hearing like every third word, word.
That's weird. This is, this is a brand new cord, it was working this morning.
It's probably because it's like laying on, shit's laying on it, so let's check the connection, oh stuff, I mean. We're all adults here, get over it.
See, I think it, she said. Okay, that should be, is this better Bob, or worse?
Stand right there, keep doing that.
Bob, can you hear us?
No, I can, that sounded clear.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you again.
Is that better?
Does he have to strike a pose during the meeting?
Lay it down.
See what-
Okay, Bob, is that better? Bob?
Oh lord.
Oh wow.
Uh oh.
Yep, stick it up on the table. Check the connection to the computer.
Yeah, it's hanging down in the USB port, I think.
This is plugged in second, this is plugged in second.
Plug it, like just check it, make sure it's plugged in like nice and tight.
It is.
Okay, Bob, is that better? In and out, okay.
No, it's, it's still buffering.
This is brand new, sorry.
We fixed this at the park starting green light meeting this morning.
Now see, when you're talking Kim, you're, you're clear, so I don't know if you're over the speaker.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes, that's better, I don't hear any buffering right now.
Would you like us to pass an ordinance where only Kim can speak?
I would!
The whole village might want that.
Alright, so yeah, means you have to talk loud. Okay, can you hear me? Bob, can you hear Christina?
Can you hear me Bob?
This is going great.
Yeah.
Won't you pass it?
Let's pass it, yeah.
Maybe that's just, maybe we need a new speaker.
Can you hear me now?
Oh my gosh. Here, unplug, unplug it. Unplug it from the computer.
That mic might be dying on us. That, that thing cord is brand new.
We just plugged it in this morning. Yeah, check, yeah.
The, the one, yeah, the, the box down there has nothing to do with the mic, the box is the key to your mouse.
Right? Alright, is that better?
Let's, let's do an audio test, let's do that.
Output volume.
Okay, that sounded fine.
Okay, I can see your mouth moving Austin, but I can't hear you.
Alright, X out of that, Bob, can you hear me?
Still that buffering, but-
Can, can you try to mute your, on your end and see if that helps? Mute, mute yourself Bob and see if that helps at all.
Okay.
It's probably Bob's end.
It really wasn't the other day, when I, when Bob and I, I was like, oh my god, that was driving me crazy.
I unplugged the extension cord in one meeting and plugged it straight in, I inserted it straight up, it was the extension cord.
Is that better Bob? No?
Try doing that again, I mean, brand new cord could be bad.
Well, I know, but it worked in the R and D.
Yeah, like for example, Austin, everything you just said to Andy, I couldn't hear, so in other words, it's that buffering.
Well, Chris, the mic wrong's near Christina right now.
Yeah, but you should, you should still be able to hear her.
Do we have any other?
No more.
Andy, you do it again, you fix it, you did it last time.
All I did was just take the cord out of it. Yeah, I was gonna say take, plug that into the actual laptop.
Can me call you on my phone Bob?
Well, that's what we did before.
You threw that.
It's only gonna be able to go to right here then.
I know, that's the problem, we may just have to do it.
Might be this.
I'm, I'm more, you know, I'm more concerned just for the, the audience if they-
Is that better?
Is this better Bob?
That's better, yes.
Oh my gosh. It might be, it actually could be, could be the cord on the computer.
Could be.
So you just changed the brand new one out of there?
Yeah, that cord's racing.
That cord came out of the box this morning.
Way lighter cord than this, so it could be.
Can you hear me?
I'll put that in my office.
Bob, can you hear me good?
No, for example, Austin spoke right now to Andy, I, I could barely hear him.
Well, he was barely speaking.
But, I don't know, maybe we'll see how we go.
He was very quiet when he was speaking to me.
Alright, Bob, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Christina, talk, talk loud.
Can you hear me Bob?
Barely when you just spoke, I heard him.
You need to talk louder. Cause I'm loud!
You gotta project.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Ten minutes into voice checking.
Somebody's gonna walk in here and think we're all dead.
There's old Verizon commercials.
Okay, so the property neutral rate that's passed around, looks like this sheet. Every year there's a revaluation, we have to post a property revenue neutral rate, which our revenue neutral rate is gonna be .0465 cent. So basically, if our tax rate was .0465 cent, it would be the same revenue that we would have coming in. Roughly, what we're anticipating in the budget that we have now is 5.5, whereas this one would be 4.6 cent.
So this, this extra revenue is based on like more new homes in the tax base?
So the question was, what is the difference of the, the revenue, how we're getting that revenue, and it's based off of the valuation estimates. If you look at the sheet, at the top of the sheet, it tells you the valuation increase is $355,000, which is roughly, I'm sorry, $355 million, which is roughly a 28% increase in our valuation. So all the home values went up per year in county.
Oh, you're talking about the, the county revaluation.
So all that, so that value went up.
Which is 355 in Marvin.
In Marvin. Yes.
This is a lot bigger number.
Right, this is for the village.
355 million dollars just in Marvin.
Yep.
Is how much the-
No, that's because my property doubled, so yeah.
Home value went up, yeah. So, because that went up, we are getting more revenue, so we have to post what the revenue neutral would be.
Correct.
But we have to be at five cents to accept power bill, so we can't go below five.
I, I don't know, I've never heard that, so I don't know.
Oh no, power bill requires you to be at five cents.
Okay, and I'm not proposing 4.6, I'm proposing 5.5, which is- Which is a half cent less than what we are now, and we'll still make, we'll still have more revenue. So we're helping out our constituents, but we're still getting more revenue to do more things for our constituents. We don't have to, to go with the revenue neutral, we just have to post it, so we have to put it in our budget and budget.
So if we stay at 6% with the increase in the valuations, how much more could we expect to come in and what could we do with that? Cause people have already accepted the 6%. From five to six percent, I'm just, I'm just asking, we're always-
So the, the second sheet that came around, looks like this.
Yep, there you go.
The, the six cent scenario one is the gain total of revenue that we would bring in, whereas the 5.5 is the second scenario. So what's the difference? Somebody do the math for me, who's got a calculator?
Eighty, seventy, seventy and some change, high seventies. Seventy seven, seventy six.
And so what's the difference between?
Seventy seven thousand, seventy seven thousand five hundred and eighty.
Perfect.
And I guess the question is, cause you, you never want to raise taxes if you don't have to, but we've already raised it to accommodate the thing, and I understand the revenue neutral, but there's an opportunity that, to stay at 6%. It isn't really that much, but when you think about how it affects each individual homeowner, it's, it just isn't. The half cent, so.
So keep in mind that even though taxes-
Maybe twenty five dollars?
If, if we don't go up on our tax rate, or, I'm sorry, if we keep our tax rate the same, affected property owners will still have an increase in their taxes even though the rate stays the same.
Yeah, but, but that was done by Union County, it's been a devaluation, that was gonna happen either way.
In Marvin, correct, taxes, it's a Union County increase, not Marvin.
But we did the 6% to come, go from five to six to get that officer, they're gonna 100% to that, so.
But now we'll get, what, what, what was, what was our original six cent?
The yield?
Yeah.
Nine hundred thirty.
No, that was, that's the new one, what's the old one?
The old property rate?
Yeah, do we know what that is?
Yeah, it's, um, it's-
How many cars come through here today?
Seven one eight, seven hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and four.
So it's almost $200,000 more? Hot diggity dog, we could do a lot of that.
Now keep in mind, roughly a hundred of that is going to pay village hall debt service payment, so.
So okay, so still, a hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money.
Still add another deputy with that.
Hot diggity dog.
Or we could amp up the trails that we are, have been neglecting for so long.
So, so the amount, if you, if you consider the average home, and it's no longer this, but the average home in, in Marvin, say was at $500,000, the difference in that 5.5% and the 6% tax is literally $25 for the year. That's it, so, I mean.
Yeah, you're probably looking at it more realistically, around forty, but what's forty dollars a year? I mean, when you're looking at, at home of that caliber, what is, I mean, it's nothing.
What is, seventy seven thousand?
So, yeah.
So we've presented the budget with a 5.5 tax rate, if you guys want to change it back to six, completely fine, we'd have about $70,000 to play with, to put somewhere else. But I'm gonna go through the budget in its detail with the 5.5, and we can go back and adjust that later if we need to.
Um, can I have a, a request, if somebody could call me on the phone and just use your phone, that I, I'll put it on speakerphone.
I got you Bob.
Thank you, I'm following, I'm following the conversation somewhat, so I know you're talking about the, the difference in the tax rate, but I, I'm missing words, so thank you.
I wonder if it's our internet connection.
I don't either, I'm not.
Maybe it's the strength of my internet, I'm not sure, there's really not much that can be.
Alright, you good Bob?
I'm gonna mute him on here.
Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna, oh, we need to mute him.
Yeah, you, you need to-
No, we need to-
That's, we just muted us.
No, he needs to mute us.
You, you need to mute us on your phone Bob.
On the computer. The computer is muted.
He's muted on there, yeah.
Perfect. Alright, so you can hear us Bob, give us a thumbs up.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, but you mute, you mute us. On your phone, hit, hit mute, I don't want to hear you.
We're getting a lot of background noise in your-
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so you can hear me now, right? Bob, can you hear me?
I can hear you right now.
Okay, but, but just give me a, mute, mute the phone and give me a thumbs up that you can hear me. Can you hear me? You can hear me now? Okay, perfect, there we go. Here, let's do this. We'll move him around, we'll move you around the table when we're talking Bob. So I'm gonna go through the budget as we presented with a 5.5. But what do we want to do?
We don't know yet.
Well, she's gonna go through it, and then we can come back, you know, we'll come back and figure out what we want to do.
So, I don't know if you heard that, but I'm gonna go through the budget with a 5.5 tax rate. There's been some discussion about maybe keeping it at six cents, and so what I'll do is present it as we've got with the 5.5, and if y'all want to add some more money in different areas, then we can do so and change that rate back, not a problem.
Okay.
So, um, the very first page shows you your revenues, and we've gone through this a lot, so I'm not gonna go through it line by line. Main thing I just wanted to point out is that we do have a $15,000 contingency here, we usually have a $50,000 contingency. We were only able to put 15 in based off of what we've got here, so if we want to add more in somewhere, that would be an area where I would, where I would suggest. Where, where do we usually pull, pull from? It's just we, we've had, we had more expenditures this year that we weren't able to- No, but what do we usually pull, like, when we say it's contingency, what do we, and we usually have 50, what do we usually go to that contingency for? Like, what do we spend it on? Yeah. Anything that pops up. And we only have 15, so all that stuff that's usually like, oh, pull out a contingency, yeah, we need to up that number. And we do have roughly $15,000 down at the bottom where you see that 14, 7, 67, to play with somewhere, so we can put that into contingency and it would be 30 at that point. I'm sorry, y'all, y'all see it, 16, 16,000.
Oh, okay.
Totally lost.
I know, but I've already taken notes on that myself. Okay, so it's 16,000?
Yeah.
And this is at 5.5% at this first page.
That's what we have to play with, so we can, we can move that up. Yeah, okay. Alright. Alright, so the next page is all of your revenues. You'll see the real and personal property and the motor vehicles matches up with the worksheet that has the 5.5 tax rate. So this is where we would change that number if we decided to stay at the six cent. Everything else is pretty much everything that you've already seen. You've got $147,000 power bill appropriation, which is what we're anticipating. We, um, did put $30,000 in here in the miscellaneous revenue, based off of us maybe getting some beach and ways that want to contribute to traffic calming devices. It's in there as an equal expenditure, so if we don't bring in that revenue, we won't spend it. And you'll see the 1.17 million in debt proceeds, which is a loan for village hall, which we'll get to in just a little bit. Any questions on that page? So the next page is general government, this is where all your general government activities are gonna be. There is a, right now there's a 2% COLA and a 3% merit in there for all employees. I still don't know what this number's gonna come back from the league of municipalities, they will finish that report in April, and we'll try to match what that number says in, in their reports, so this number may change. The council stipend for the additional council member is in there. And something that I had just kind of pondered this morning that I wanted to mention to you guys, and that you may like it, you may not, but I did put additional board allowance in here under the PRG and plan board stipends, for the equal amount that they, those board members are getting for council members, if are, if they're the liaison to that board. So for instance, like, I think you're on the PRG board. They get $50 a month, we would treat the council member that's that liaison the same. I don't know if y'all like that or not, but I know that y'all spend a lot of time, especially a council member, Mark Lys, and Mayor Protim into these meetings, and so if that's something y'all want to do, it's there, I've got it budgeted, if not, we can take it out, not a big deal. I think we should do it for everybody that does extra meetings. Okay.
That's a lot of extra time, I agree with it.
Like WUMA, whatever you guys do CRTPO, you can't get double though Joe.
Speaking of which, ethics.
Centralina.
Did you submit that? Alright, it came up on mine, we'll have to look at your email.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't know if you're on there.
No, but I agree with the, with the extra.
He's on the NHD committee, but they don't get a stipend.
And they're not-
Well, we can't, we can't vote if it affects us candidate.
No, and y'all will have to change your policy anyways, so, because right now you don't get a stipend for these extra board meetings. So we'll have to work on that at a staff level, but can you give me an, like, can you give me an idea for what the compensation should be? I think, I think everybody goes to at least one extra meeting a month, whether it's COG, WUMA, what do you do in Centralina? Planning Board.
CRTPO.
Yeah, but you don't get double. You can't, you can't get WUMA and CRTPO.
They're, they're different boards, aren't they?
Yeah, we can't get double.
So I could go to twice the meetings, three times a meeting, I can't do every meeting.
So do y'all want, do y'all want to do a-
You're the mayor.
That's why they made me the big boss.
Yeah, you already get extra anywhere. And we were gonna do the-
Thanks Kim.
The way we do the board stipends for planning board and PRG is we actually take their attendance and they only get paid if they come. I don't know how we would do that for WUMA, CRTPO and COG, but if it's like an honor system, I don't know how y'all want to do that, but y'all just, if we just want to change the council stipend, we can do that to make it easier, or if y'all want to actually do attendance base for the extra meetings, we can do that as well, but.
Well, all of it could be audited if it had to be, so we could go by the audit system, I mean, the honor system, but, you know, cause they take roll call at who comes to CRTPO.
Listen, we're hurting ourselves if we're not showing up at those meetings, so we're gonna show up.
Right.
Right, and then, you know, Joe and I usually both, most of the time both go to WUMA, but if one or the other can't make it, one of us is there, but usually we both go. And it's to our advantage for both of us to go, so we both keep up with what's going on in the meetings.
I mean, I would say that, yeah, we should, because, I mean, it is a lot of extra time that we put in.
But for, as, as we add more council members and say we don't, it'd have to be separate in fact, rather than just adding to the stipend of the council members, because some may just be too busy to be going to other meetings and stuff, so.
True. I don't think there's any lack of extra meetings for more council members to attend however.
Yeah, I don't think it should be any more than what planning board gets or-
It should be 50, so if you go to WUMA, you get 50, if you go to CRTPO, you get 50, if you go to Centralina, you get 50.
And then planning board just gonna have a 75.
Ooh!
I'm there every, every Tuesday, like next Tuesday.
Hey, well, you're not really there, you're kinda in the house.
Do y'all want me to increase PRG and make them all the same?
Their, their rules of procedure will have to change, but we can do that, it's not a problem.
I think that PRG works as hard as planning board, to be honest with you, but-
I know.
I don't know why there was a distinction there between the two of them, but I think they work just as hard as the other.
Well, we'll have to change the policy either way, so if y'all want to make them all 75 dollars for all boards, and we can add another account in here for other boards, and use some type of attendance tracking honor system of some sort. I think that's good.
I think PRG would appreciate that since they're, they pledge their-
They do too.
Yeah. All their stuff to the wildlife society, so that's just an extra money for them, for them to go to that.
Is everybody okay with that?
I am.
I am.
Okay, we'll, we'll work out, work it out on the staff level, the details. Alright, moving on, um, we did have a slight decrease in health insurance, just so y'all know.
Wow.
Wasn't, that wasn't expected at all, so we've got that in the budget.
Supposed to be healthy?
So, um, there's also-
Healthcare went up this year.
We planned a 14% increase or 15% increase.
Smart answer.
We also put, um, just so you know, and we'll talk about this in the meeting tonight, but we are, as I've mentioned several times, is we're going out to RFP for a CPA firm to come in and kind of hold our hand through the audit process and to do monthly checks. I put in an estimated $20,000 in here for that, hopefully it'll be around there, if it's not, we'll have to increase that line item.
And what's that?
And where would we pull that from?
The new CPA, it's about two thirds of the way down.
We're gonna need to up that.
Professional services.
The sheet, fourth one down.
Yeah, I'm looking at the two, isn't it? Oh, there it is.
It's all the way to the right.
I've got another contingency out there in a minute. Okay, so the new audit numbers are in here. We also have the contract for Union County to collect their taxes, which is the 12,000 that you see in professional services, 11,000 and some change. Everything else is pretty much the same. Moving on to the next page. Operating expenditures for general government. You do have $15,000 in administrative discretionary funds, so this is basically another kind of contingency. Usually we have about this much in there, and I'll just pull from it as staff needs stuff, I can't spend money out of that account, we have to do a budget amendment to actually spend it, but it is sitting there in case we need it for office expenditures or anything like that. Moving down to occupancy, everything else in operating is pretty much the same. We do have rent for nine months here where we're sitting now, and then we had the debt service payment of $86,583. Which, do we need to give them, give the church notice? Uh, we're on a month by month right now.
And do, when do we start paying on that debt?
That, Jamie, do you know the answer?
I think it should be when the church must flee.
Take one pass around.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you look at the sheet that's coming around.
6:30, 2022, looks like when it starts.
Sometime in June.
So are we doing a construction loan and then converting to mortgage, or are we doing a straight mortgage?
Um, it's an installment purch, it's an installment purchase agreement, so once we, so what they're collateralizing until we finish the loan payment is the actual building itself, so I guess you could liken it to mortgage, it's not quite ours until we're finished with the amortization of it.
Okay, so we're not having to do a construction loan and then convert to an installment loan?
Where we're paying on whatever, so, say he takes a draw of half a million dollars, then the clock starts ticking on the half million dollars that he, that the contractor takes the draw on, because the money's in the bank, we got the loan, I think that's what he's asking. Or are we waiting till we're move-in date, like you would buy a house, you move into the house, and then that's when you're mortgaging.
Generally, when you build, you have to do a construction loan, which is usually about a 12-month period. And then at the end of the construction, when there is actual collateral for them to attach, then they move it to an installment loan and it pays off the construction loan, but the construction loan puts the money out there for the actual construction. So that's why I was asking if it was, if we had that scenario, or if we were going straight to an installment deal, that they're just-
Cause I, I don't think this guy can float the one, whatever he bid, the 1.4 million.
So no, no, we're paying him throughout the construction process.
Yeah, he's gonna take draws, right.
We're gonna take, we're gonna take draws from the loan.
Okay, so then along the way then, we're gonna have to start paying off of those draws, like if you take a half million dollar draw.
That's the question. So the, the first payment we have due on the 30th of June of 2022 is an annual payment. So our first payment won't take place to the very end of the year. And it's a lump sum payment? Yes. So we're not paying monthly? No, not in a year. Okay, so that's your answer, we're paying annually, or once a year, yeah, annually. So we're only gonna have, how many payments, 20? Yeah, like your house amortization is much larger than this, it's multiple pages.
Yeah.
Ours is, yeah, like she said, 20.
Goes for paying annually.
Twenty years.
So you guys will be putting, every month you'll be putting money into a pot, or you, at the, beginning of the year, you're putting the money in the pot to pay for the mortgage. Or it just sits there in the room. Same principle, yes.
Yeah.
It, we're, we're not putting it anywhere, I don't want you to get confused, it stays in the operating budget until the bill comes. But it's in a spot for-
It's in an escrow, yeah.
It's in our bank account, it'll sit in our bank account. She gets really confused about where money lives, so.
Well, does it, does it have to live there, or can it make interest over the year?
You're not gonna make any interest right now.
Well, I mean, if you got a year, it's an annual.
Doesn't matter, you're gonna make- Doesn't matter, you're gonna make on that money, you're gonna make maybe forty dollars a month.
So that's that's a question, that's honestly a conversation for another time, because we.
Six thousand dollars?
Oh, if that.
Really?
We have.
You can have two hundred grand in the bank, and you're gonna make about forty dollars, if that.
So we have basically one checking account, and everything comes out of it, everything. It's really just a matter of how we keep the numbers stored in our internal system. So one checking account, everything goes in and out, so the money will sit in that checking account, it gains interest. We have, I think, two thousand dollars estimated in annual investment earnings for that money that we have, not just eighty-six thousand dollars, but all the money that we have. So anyways, the amortization schedule is eighty-six, did you want to say something?
No, because I don't think it answers your question.
Okay, the eighty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars is what is taken from this amortization schedule, assuming y'all approve this tonight, and that's plugged into the budget for the annual payment that will take place.
Oh, and it goes down.
Love it. It does increase for a certain couple of years.
Just one year, yeah.
And then it decreases two years, actually.
Well, but then the third year, it goes down like the second year, so.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
Any additions that you want? You good and free? Sugar free? How many calories is that? Are you good?
That's sugar free.
Oh, no.
That's five calories.
We're borrowing one point four and we're paying one point five.
Five calories.
Get that out of my face off of me, yeah.
Is this right, we're borrowing one point four and we're paying back one point five over twenty years?
Uh huh, you're borrowing one point one seven.
One seven, okay.
Yeah.
You always pay more than your.
There should be a a budget in front of you that's a loan.
Okay, there it is, the principal and then the.
Yeah, that shows.
So the interest is three thirty-four, three thirty-five, that's still not not too bad over twenty years.
So we'll get into the details of this topic in the the actual meeting, but for sake of this conversation, just know that the debt service payment is eighty-six thousand dollars, which is taken directly from the from the amortization schedule, which is plugged right into the budget.
Okay.
Is worth another. Okay, moving on, any other questions on that?
You gotta go, you got that number on.
All right, planning zoning, everything's pretty much the same there is what you've seen. You do have seventy-one thousand dollars in budgeted miscellaneous projects, projects and or the planning assistant, which is basically the same contract we have now and the same number of hours, nothing's changed on it. You do have the eleven thousand dollar contract with COG, where code enforcement is in there, it's the first year we've done that for a full year, we're actually doing it now and it's working out pretty good.
Are they enforcing it?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they're doing it, sent them a complaint today. Any questions on planning and zoning? No?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, moving on to transportation, I'm sorry, no, this is public safety. This is the question I have for you guys. Right now, the budget is exactly how it is today, the proposed budget, twelve months of off-duty. The increase is three point nine percent, we've got that plugged in. However, we are projecting to start the roundabout in the fiscal year of twenty twenty-two, so.
It's still gonna be twelve months.
Yeah, okay, so we've got it in here, didn't know if y'all wanted to change that, but it's in here fully budgeted. Any questions?
Yeah, that wouldn't change that budget. Till that traffic circle fills, that wouldn't change that.
Moving on to transportation. You've got forty thousand dollars in sidewalk construction. This is for the pedestrian crosswalk that is in the CIP that's approved. It is, I'm gonna send that around so y'all have it. Take one and pass it.
Now, can I ask you a question? Did we get a buy-in from all the HOAs regarding that?
Well.
We're gonna get back to them again. But not yet, but we gotta do it.
This is just for us, I mean, we we had planned on doing three of them, or sorry, we had planned on doing one. The estimates came in much higher than what we thought they were, and then we had went to all the HOAs in that area and asked them if they wanted to contribute to do all of the crosswalks in that area. They said yeah, but then when we gave them the number, they kind of backed out, and now we're going back with the one that we originally planned at the cost that we actually got estimated, so.
Oh, okay, thank you.
If you look in the the chart that just went around, you'll see the forty thousand dollars there.
I don't see it.
I don't see it either, actually.
Pedestrian refuges are sixty thousand in year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, we need to move, somehow this got messed up, but that's that's where it is. It's the CIP, I mean, it's the on the crosswalk.
On the road, you run a median all the way down.
Hold on, I got that mixed up.
Nice big wide median.
Okay, moving on, I don't know if y'all want to take this out, but there's twenty thousand dollars in here for a traffic impact analysis for the Heritage District. And for the engineering, this was in the original budget before we started talking about not contributing anymore to the Heritage District. I don't know if y'all want to do the traffic analysis, if not, we can pull that out.
I don't worry about it.
Where is that at?
Engineer.
Engineer, it's a.
I would think we wouldn't know what we're doing right now, but we can just leave it in there, right? Can only take it out later.
Yeah, we, I mean, if we don't use it, it'll go back into fund balance reserve for power bill purposes, so it's not like. But if you if you're for sure you don't want to do it, then we need to take it out of the budget, because if not, we have budget authority to do it.
Well, for sure, for sure, for sure.
Not it, yeah.
Well, we have to come back for contractual with that amount anyway, so we'll leave it, okay.
Question is, is it gonna happen in twenty twenty-two?
So we have road repair and maintenance at fifteen thousand, this is for your street signs, potholes, anything that comes up that's front land.
Moving on to where it says road resourcing capital project transfer, thirty-five thousand, four hundred. Basically, before you guys got here, we would take money, we had money for roads and we put it into the capital project ordinance. And what what we would do is transfer money every year into that capital project, and it just got really redundant and took a lot of time. So basically, what we're doing now is we're just keeping this money in, it's not spent, it rolls into power bill reserve, fund balance power bill reserve. So any money that's not used in this entire budget right here for transportation will stay in that power bill reserve. That thirty-five thousand dollars is basically money that I'm not projecting to use for this year, and it's gonna stay right in that account.
And we won't, we don't risk because of all the stuff going on of the, you have to use that money within a certain time.
No, we're good right now.
Yeah, and I've got a chart that I'll send out in just a second that Jamie's been working on. As soon as we get done with this, I'll I'll project it out and show you. Twenty thousand dollars for emergency repairs and traffic calming devices, if if we get any of those. And we also have a hundred and fifteen thousand for the roundabout match, which is what we've already signed the contract with DOT. This is coming from power bill reserve, so you'll see a fund balance appropriation in your revenues on the front page of a hundred and fifteen. That's exactly where it's at.
So if we have more, if if our overages are like, obviously more than that, then they're not gonna be done. We'll be talking about that next budget.
Or we'll do a budget amendment.
Yeah, but like, we're not, I mean, they're not gonna be done before.
They shouldn't be, yeah.
I mean, they'll ask for it like.
A year later.
Yeah, like they did last time, yeah.
Any questions on any of that?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm gonna send out this track and sheet that we put together, and this is really just projections that.
Take one and pass it.
Okay, don't say it, you don't do it.
Thank you.
Okay. So you'll see in fiscal year twenty-two, at the very top, you've got a rollover balance of sixty-one thousand. That's basically your starting balance, and what we've kind of put in here is all the projects that we know we're gonna need, and also we put in planned emergencies that we think we're gonna have. And so we've projected out over the several next years what our bottom line's gonna be, which is a very bottom number. You'll see negatives and positives. We don't get to a negative until twenty-four, and most of that is because that's when we're starting to use some of our reserve for for the major projects, being the roundabout, the STIP match, if we decide to accept that grant. That STIP is for the project for the sidewalks, the CRTPO grant that we received. This does not cover the entire match, this only covers a very small amount of it. But we we didn't want to put some level of funding in with power bill, and that's where that that is. We also know about the Providence sidewalk, that happens way down the road, but we put it in there for projection purposes.
Why do we have roundabout, two hundred thousand and twenty-three and a hundred and fifteen and twenty-four?
So the hundred and five is what we just sent over recently, the hundred and fifteen is what we're projecting them to to add, you know how they had asked for additional money? The two hundred is overage and construction, it's just complete estimates. And then one fifty is if anything else crazy happens, lighting plan, that sort of thing that we have to pay for. So these numbers are are pretty high, but they're really just estimates, we want to make sure we're covering everything. Once we get actual numbers, we'll be able to make this look a little bit more fancy, but we want to make sure that y'all know we're tracking it, and this is what we're working on.
Good.
Any questions on that?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to the next sheet, which is parks and rec. No real changes on here, except for Derek has converted to full-time, so you'll see an increase in salary there. You'll also see park projects at forty thousand dollars, which is coming from the capital project fund. And Jamie, I just noticed that the transfers to the capital went from ten thousand to twenty-seven, do you do you know why that was changed? Right here, transfer. So we, yeah, we we won't, I'm gonna put some money in that line item. So basically, if you look at the number under forty thousand, the twenty-seven hundred, we put ten thousand dollars in that line item last year for an annual appropriation for greenways, because we don't, we don't, we did not, we did not actually contribute any ongoing dollars to that that line item. So we'll we'll make some adjustments there to add a little bit of money in there, but I mean, obviously, we're not gonna add much, but that's pretty much it.
So what's the forty thousand gonna be for?
Forty thousand is for.
Trailer storage building, lakeside corridor, park trail enhancements and fitness trail. Is that right? Is that what we decided on? Is it?
And that trailer and and storage building.
That's just a that's just a savings account for five thousand.
Right, because that's.
Lakeside corridor is just, okay, park trail, okay. And this has this has none of the loop stuff, right? This is the.
That's completely separate, yeah, that's a capital project, yeah. So the loop stuff, like you mentioned, says one thirty-five, I believe?
Oh, yeah, okay.
You do have some money, if y'all remember. That's your total capital projects. You don't have much money in there for park purposes, you've got thirteen thousand and forty-six thousand.
What I wanna know is how many trees did we kill for this budget?
See, right there, thirteen, forty-six.
Oh, there.
Lot of paper.
And then you have what's called fund balance reserve, which is what I'd refer to for the the power bill. So you have another pot of money that's in your fund balance that you've got reserved for land acquisition, loop and greenway expansion. The loop and greenway expansion has a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in there, that's where y'all wanted to pull the money to pay for this CIP here, the hundred and thirty-five. So we'll do that when we get to that point, and basically, it's just gonna be an expenditure out of that capital. But just keep that in mind, that's where we're gonna pull it from that reserve.
Have you put any thought, because I know maybe a year or so back, we had a a student, I think we paid them like a stipend, or not a stipend, but we had a student here for a short time.
We did, an intern.
It's Austin.
No, but there was somebody else, wasn't there someone else?
We did, we had a planning intern.
So we considered, continued to consider that, because a lot of the internships are, they don't pay anything. I mean, not that I'm saying we should do that, but is there a need for that, do you think?
There's no room.
I know that, but but people work from home.
We we definitely have considered it, will consider just consider it once we have available time freed up to administer these folks, so.
Okay, I'm just was curious to see if, you know, there was something.
Do y'all want to discuss the tax rate and contract staff, where you want to go with that?
Yep.
So y'all y'all have seen the budget based on the five point five? Knowing that we gotta make a couple of changes, but nothing really substantial.
What?
This was all on five point five percent.
Playing the cold.
There there's five point five percent, so it's six.
So we're six, we're still at six, we're at six cent.
So the budget that you just saw was at five point five percent, knowing that we have to make some minor adjustments, nothing major. We've got the sixteen thousand dollars that you see at the bottom of your page that we can play with to make those adjustments, not a huge deal. If you want to put the tax rate at six cent and keep it the way that it is, we're gonna have an additional seventy thousand to play with. Y'all can direct us where you want to see that, if you want to see it in parks and rec, you want to put it back into fund balance, roads.
I mean, you're you're moving that fourteen into contingency, that's still only gives you twenty-nine in contingency, which is, it it seems like that.
We pull from contingency a lot.
A lot, so I would say.
I like having the fifty number contingency, like we've always had. That makes me feel a lot more comfortable, and then how much money we have to.
Exactly.
Yeah, if we put the fifty in contingency and then put the rest back into fund balance to.
To to pull from stuff, if we have something that we want to do a trail or or put some, how much do we have?
Or we want to replace a part in the area.
Well, and and just just keep this in mind, guys. Derek called me today, that there's significant rot on the playground equipment and stuff, that stuff may need to be pushed up time-wise, I have to go down there and look at it in the morning with him, but.
He's closed it, so it's been closed since Monday, and he's gonna close, he says it's gonna be closed at least through Thursday.
It's 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 getting pretty rough, and it's a significant expense to replace that, so. Again, you know, that may be where it needs to go sooner than later.
So the wood is rotting.
Yeah, it's rotting, and I'm.
They get with that plastic stuff, did.
I don't know.
They probably didn't have it, well, we.
No, no, they have, that's been around.
Next summer of years.
Well, well, we're not gonna go wood now, which is worse, too expensive.
Ten years? It's done pretty well for what it for what it was, and I knew it, but and it was partly the look.
Okay, so we'll have, if we put fifty thousand dollars into that contingency, we'll have forty thousand to put elsewhere. Now, keep in mind, I'd like to put some in the greenways reserve, so let me just take ten thousand out of that, and that gives me thirty thousand left. Where else would you guys like to see?
Well, we were just talking about the playground equipment, and that's, I I'm not sure what that number is gonna be. I I spoke with Derek earlier today, and I'm gonna go down there and look at the the situation with the rock on there. But that was, was that in his budget?
Yeah, but it's like a while, it's ways down.
So he's got playground replacement in here?
Yeah, and that was a couple of years, twenty twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five, that's a huge amount of money.
This may be an area, though, that we can use some of our American Rescue Plan.
Ooh.
So.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's ninety thousand dollars that he's got budget.
We could get a Batman and Timmy playground.
Well, and if we can do that, right?
Could we do like an adult playground, too? Actually, do like an adult playground?
Yeah.
I was thinking like a Top Golf, where you just hit golf balls.
Actually, there was some interest in a toddler playground, because that set is not designed for toddlers.
They don't play ta, they don't pay taxes.
Still vote either, Jamie.
Let's go back, what do we want to do?
I I'm with the six. I'm I'm with the six, and then distribute it in the way we talked about. I, because you're not, there's not gonna be a, no one's gonna identify the significance of it, perhaps, so, you just want. There's, that's. I mean, again, mindset is is been at six for almost a year now, so I I have no problem, but I would like to see it to go to good. Yeah, the things that, you know, like the playground or whatever, that could improve that, so, I mean, at the end of the day, it's it's not a big adjustment, I think it.
So I've got one, two, three at six, did you say six?
Bob, where are you at? Bob says I'm at home. Unmute, unmute, unmute.
Thank you, I'm trying to mix about it. Thank you. I'm kind of mixed about it, but if it were to be an increase, given the situation at Union County, that is doing what they're doing, I, I mean, I don't know, would be, would be kind of just all into it all?
We're not increasing, we're not increasing anything, Bob. We're leaving it alone or lowering it.
The only reason why the.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, okay.
The only, the only, the, the number would have been the same, Bob, because it's six percent that we already approved, six cents. We already approved. It was Union County with the, you know, every eight years they reassess. It was gonna go to a six percent anyways. So all we're doing for revenue neutral, we were thinking, considering five point five to make it revenue neutral from what we projected, but for the difference, keeping it at six, it adds seventy K approximately to the coffers, then as long as I, 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 as long as it's going to use, that we can see things that are tangible items, I would like to see some go towards land acquisition, but you know, putting, if, if we really need the playgrounds, I'd rather say just, let's get that addressed.
Yeah, I will, I agree, and I agree with what you're saying, and that's where I'm going with it, so.
All right, so it sounds like we're all okay with six percent.
We'll go back to the drawing board and make some changes, and we'll have some revisions at the next meeting.
And when, when do we approve this in May?
In the next meeting, the town will vote on it?
Um, I think.
You have to have a special meeting.
Which y'all will call public hearing.
It has to be completely done by June. Right, but May is.
Under.
Well, we did. Well, the work session.
Public hearing is for May eleventh. Okay, and it'll be.
No, public hearing is May twelfth.
It'll be the meeting after that, so it'll be there.
May fourteenth.
That'll be the.
May tw, May twelfth is the town, is the town hall, and then May fourteenth, we are officially advertising that it's gonna be adopted the next week.
Which will be June eighth, not May.
May twenty-seven.
May twenty-seven is your adoption.
What?
That's why you, you, you always adopt it in a May.
We will never adopt it in a work session, because people will.
You guys scheduled it to move the work session to six thirty.
That's right, you're right, you're right, you're right, okay.
Pool.
Yep, that's right. I was like, there's.
From nine a.m.
It's supposed to be.
That's right.
No, 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 like, for the pool.
We should remind everybody about that, because I forgot. Okay. You're right.
Okay. Nope.
No.
Okay.
No, I'm good, thank you.
We are good to go then. We know what to do.
Okay. Anything else, Chris?
Four minutes early, look at that.
All right, good time to get through a little quick break. So I need a motion to adjourn.
Six twenty-seven.
All the, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Um, can we use your phone for the next?